I get tired.
Really?
Couple hours.
We can switch.
I mean, it doesn't make any sense what she's doing.
Was it something I said?
And I do understand.
Could have been. Did you shower?
Usually is.
Did you shower at any time?
Drop them like flies.
No, look at him, he's down by the water with all his friends.
I'm sad because I know that he still loves her.
All right, we are live. Good evening, and it is 6:00 PM Tuesday, August 22nd. City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Join me in standing for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the awesome opportunity to be here today. Thank you for the weather. Thank you for another day of life. Thank you for this opportunity. We have to serve this great community and just pray that you would guide our conversations and decisions to be made here tonight in your name and prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Desiree, roll call?
Yes. I'm not used to this, and I forgot to hit record, so give me one second.
Do we have to say it later?
No, I think you're good. Councilmember Anderson is joining us remotely via Zoom.
Here.
Councilmember Bogosian.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. You guys are right. First item is citizens' comments.
We have one person who signed up to speak, Rusty Streetman.
Good evening. Rusty Streetman, 44th Avenue. And I want to thank Mayor Pounds and council for allowing me to speak this evening. I know that you would do that anyway, but just trying to be courteous on this. What I wanted to do is express my thanks and appreciation for what all of you have done in the city in regards to Tropical Storm Debbie. As a longtime resident, I just wanted to take just a minute or two and express how much appreciation all of us on the island as residents owe to the entire city administration, city staff, and for all of you and your leadership for the work that was done during the storm and accomplished not only before the storm, during the storm, but in the aftermath as well. I sent Desiree and Mayor Pounds a text on August the 7th and told them how very impressed I was by the teamwork, the communication, and organizational skills that were exhibited from what I could see as a resident during the storm. And I just felt like, after thinking about it, that wasn't enough. I wanted to come here personally and express that to all of you in person and to put it on the record. The regular updates from the city administration and the Emergency Operations Center to the community, well done, very timely. Also, it was wonderful to see the assistance we received from other local and state agencies, especially with the rapid response to the tornado and power outages. And I know that you couldn't put that in place and do that without a lot of planning, beforehand, and again, that was very encouraging to see. And of course, it goes without saying, a real special thanks to the public safety departments, police department, fire department, as well as public works and everything that was done to protect us during the storm and then after the storm for the cleanup that they did of public works. Is it ever perfect for all of this stuff? No, but you did a fine job. And I just wanted to acknowledge the leadership and preparation that went into this effort in advance of the storm and during the storm and afterwards. Y'all truly did an outstanding job in serving and taking care of the residents and visitors to the island. And by the way, it appeared that those outfalls at 41st, 36th, and 30th did what they were designed to do, so congratulations on that as well. Again, thanks to all of you for your leadership and service. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rusty. Is that it, Desiree?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item is approval of previous meetings' minutes. We have a public hearing on July 23rd, regular city council meeting, also on July 23rd, special city council workshop on August 13th. You've got all of the committee meeting minutes attached for your record, but we just need a motion for the city council meetings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any edits or comments or changes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is special presentations, consideration of proposed fiscal 25 Carter budget. We have Andrea Kozlowski with us tonight, the Deputy Director of Operations and Support for Carter. Andrea, thank you for joining us again. Nice to have you.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate your time this evening and always appreciate you reviewing the Carter budget every year. We come back to you for approval as one of our municipalities that was included in the enabling legislation when Carter was designated. Before you and your packet, I won't go into much detail because we provided you with a pretty detailed memo that explains line by line through the budget of what each item is for and what it contains. The budget this year is $28,310,283, which is a $1.7 million increase from last year. That funding is fully federal funding. It will go towards operations and to our fixed route contractor, whose contract increases every year, as you know. So that funding is strictly for fixed route service. BRT, the LCRT project, has its own pot of money. That project is wrapping up the 60% design phase currently and will be moving into 90% design phase. So we'll be going out to the public in December for design concepts of stations and the fixed guideways and how the service will look from the fairgrounds to downtown.
Andrea, do you mind just stating what the acronym is and a little bit of what it's about?
That is Low Country Rapid Transit. That's the bus rapid transit line that will run 60-foot, the articulated buses that you see with the accordion in the middle, that'll run from the park and ride lot up at the Latz and Fairgrounds, down Rivers Avenue, and down into downtown, and it will terminate at West Edge.
Thank you.
So that project is well underway. We will be going out, like I said, for public review and comments in December, first week in December, to get the public's feedback of the station designs. This is something brand new for the state of South Carolina, including Charleston. So we're very engaged in the public feedback and to make sure we get the buy-in from our municipalities and all of our stakeholders. Lastly, I'll mention Beachreach. The service ran again this year, thanks to city council and the mayor for the support. It is a partnership between Town of Mount Pleasant, Carter, and the city of Isle of Palms. Service will commence this weekend. It'll run Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. Ridership has been steady. You know, the Isle of Palms has encountered some storms in July, so ridership is down right around 13%, but if you look at the month of July, 60% of service days were rained. So that is not reflective of the service. It was still a successful year. The mayor did mention that city council will be supportive of running the service again next year, so we hope to get the buy-in from the Town of Mount Pleasant, and I know the Carter board will as well. So with that, does anybody have any questions about the budget?
Blair?
Could you just remind us for the public how much we spend, the Isle of Palms gives y'all for the beach shuttle?
Desiree, correct me if I'm wrong.
Eight thousand the first two years. This year, you increased to 10,000. And that allows for the service to be free for users.
That's correct, yeah. And it runs from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
And split with Mount Pleasant and us and a whole lot of parties around it for social media outreach. Jimmy?
Yeah, July was off because we had six rain days out of 10. But July, I mean, June numbers were really strong.
Yes.
And May was a strong, but June was a little over, I believe, 50% iron last year.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And so, you know, we're just at the mercy of the weather.
Yes, and a great partnership with Town Center to allow us to park there again.
Right.
They helped us do a lot of social media pushes. The hotels around Town Center allowed us to have signage in their lobbies, which I think really helped get some of their tourists down to the Isle of Palms without having to drive.
How many people ride it? I understand all the percentages, but I'm interested in how many people actually get on the bus and ride it here.
So so far, we've had 652 people ride it. Average is around, let me look back at the numbers, right around 85 per weekend.
So 85 people a weekend roughly?
Yes.
The other question I have is on your budget. It's up a couple million dollars. Is that mostly due to this inflationary cost or?
It is, and it's formula-based, so as our ridership increases, the federal government gives us additional funding based on our ridership. And we're still rebounding from COVID, so we hope to see that number continuously increase.
Aren't we all?
All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Andrea, thank you.
Thank you.
For y'all's help and partnership and everything Carter does for the city. Yep. Next item, old business, there is none. New business, most, a number of these, we've talked about in detail at our workshop earlier this month, so hopefully we can move through fairly quickly. Approval of, the first one is approval of proposal from First Tryon Advisors for development of long-term capital planning models, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion or conversation?
I just have a question. One of the things we talked about at workshop that this would be looked at is how to consolidate all our current spreadsheets into one spreadsheet. Is that part of the scope of this, or is that something that's going to be, because it didn't appear to be?
It is not. This is just for the capital planning model. We have sent them our documents that we use for the budget, and we are planning on meeting them. They've spent about a week reviewing them. We'll meet with them to understand the scope and their abilities, their capabilities to tie to the capital planning model. So this is a range, as you can see in the proposal. It depends on the amount of work that we need to, that would need to happen. So we still don't have any clarity yet on the additional work that would be necessary to, and if it's possible from their perspective, to consolidate both documents, but we are working with them on that. So if there's an additional expense to that, to that, we'll be bringing that forward to council to consider.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I think that was one of the key. I'm guessing we're probably going to go forward with this, but we're going to be introducing yet again another tool. So we've got BSA, we've got our budgeting spreadsheets, we've got our capital spreadsheets. And I think that, you know, for us that have been through the current spreadsheets that have been going on, I think for, you know, 15 or 20 years, we probably need an update on our, it would probably help, I think, our staff. And if we can get one integrated tool, I think we're going to be much more efficient. So I hope we do pursue, and maybe we can schedule to have an update at the next workshop on where that is, on how we can get that integrated.
Because hopefully we'll have something back from First Tryon at that point, at least flyby review of what we've said on at this point.
Correct. They said six to eight weeks for the model.
Okay. Thank you. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is recommendation from the Public Services and Facilities Committee to enter into a contract with the lowest possible bidder for bulk container collection and disposal for condominiums and businesses through October 31st, 2025. And after that date, businesses would be responsible for their own bulk container collection services. I know, Katie, I think y'all's committee met after workshop this month, just due to schedules and everything else. Typically, we would have a committee meeting, a workshop, a council, just to let it line up nicely and have deep conversation. I would like to throw out for consideration at least that we take this to workshop and spend the time. I know you guys spent an hour plus on it in committee. I would just like to follow our protocol if we would, to take it back to workshop in September. But Katie, we didn't have an opportunity to have that conversation, so I'll just.
I guess my only issue is that time is of the essence on this. And I think Rod Turnage came to our meeting, and that was one of his main concerns, was just that time, and that is why we discussed moving it, continuing it on until after the season and then also our storm hurricane season. So I'm hesitant to say to push it away another month, but we have until when to make an actual decision on the contract? I'm sorry.
So the six-month extension that council approved last month expires end of January of 2025. We would need to have at least three months of sort of a heads-up to the current vendor and a new vendor, so that all the logistics of purchasing new garbage containers, placing them, and starting that process, my goal would be end of September that we would give a notice to the new vendor.
Yeah, just to add, I think that we went to workshop and then brought it back to committee with the idea that we were bringing it back to the council meeting. And I think if we follow that protocol that we just described, we've got a lot of things on the agenda that would have to go back and recycle if we're consistent. So, I mean, I'm, you know, I think we had a recommendation. I'd rather maybe just spend, if we have to spend 10 or 15 minutes here to get this to a, you know, get this to a vote. And I think, again, the, I think the Chamber of Commerce was on board. I think we were unanimous in our vote. But if there's any concern, I think we, I don't know that we need to wait another month to go back to workshop. It's just, you know, again, if we're going to be consistent with all of it, then we'd have to take some of this all back to committees and then workshops and go through the whole process, so.
Yeah. Blair, do you feel like we discussed it enough in our committee meeting?
We certainly discussed it a lot during the committee meeting. I mean, I have no problem if it doesn't hamper our ability to get the 250 per cubic yard trash to send it back to workshop, because there's a lot of emotion around this issue. For me, I want to make sure that we treat all of the businesses the same, and as it's currently set up, it's split. We've got the bulk container people that we're dealing with, with what's before us right now, but then there are other businesses that are currently using the Herbie Kirbys, and they're using more than I understood them to use. Some businesses on the island are using upwards of 20 Herbie Kirbys. And so we need to, I think, address all of that so that every business is treated equally. And for that reason, it doesn't offend me to go to workshop and discuss this. I know Jimmy Ward has concerns, the mayor has concerns. I'm sure there are going to be people, the public, some of the public shall have concerns. And just to make sure that everybody understands what's going on, it doesn't offend me at all to push it off.
Let me ask Katie real quick. Reaction to Desiree's comment, I mean, does that, what does that do to you? I don't know, you didn't have a chance to opine?
I mean, I, it's, I don't really see any negative of waiting, other than the fact that this, I feel like this horse has been beaten enough.
Clock is ticking.
You know, but what's another couple weeks? If that's, if that's the will of council, to wait another couple weeks, I mean, it's, we've got it for six months at least. You know, I certainly would like to get something done, rather than get something not done today, so.
Scott?
I'm just trying to flush out what are the, what are the concerns or what are the other business ramifications, and maybe somebody can opine on. What are the, it sounds like several council members might have some concerns. Why don't we at least get those out so we?
And again, this is where workshop would typically happen. You know, and I don't know that I agree with the comment that we'd have to send a lot of this stuff back. Most of it's come through some type of workshop or committee meeting to have a conversation. I think we could spend an hour plus here tonight having this conversation. You know, and I've had this discussion with Desiree on numerous occasions, and I'm thinking, Scott, more about post-October next year. If we went down this path, you know, what, how many vendors are we going to unleash on this island, you know, from a truck count standpoint? You know, and I'm not proposing we continue to pay for it. That's not the conversation we're having necessarily tonight, but, you know, when I first learned this, probably five years ago, that we were paying at the $75,000 rate, I was ready to unwind it then. You know, now that we're at a $250,000 rate, that's just a lot for the city to take on. And I think the committee's done great work. I just think there's enough unanswered questions. Timing, I like the runway, I love where the committee got to from a runway standpoint for our businesses. I think there's some conversation about how or what's available for use in hospitality tax that I think we need to answer, and I think.
To continue beyond October? I'm trying to.
No, no, no. I just, I just think there's enough questions that I'm not sure you're going to have the votes to get there, to be quite honest with you.
I see. Okay. All right.
And that's just my, I mean, that's just a couple of concerns I have. Jimmy?
Well, I understand the committee worked on it for an hour, but it's been mentioned, it's been brought forward a few times, but it's just been, it hasn't gotten the attention I think it needs. I have a lot of questions in going through the businesses and where all the costs are and everything. I just have a lot more work on it that I'd like to do, and I'd like to go through the normal channel of community first, then workshop, and then council. So I'd like to defer it.
Ashley?
I mean, I would just echo what Jimmy Ward has said. I mean, I agree, and I just think there are some options that maybe we haven't considered or maybe just not talked about enough, but I feel like there's enough to talk about that it's worth, you know, talking about at the next workshop, and we're not delaying anything at this point.
Well, if we're just going to not talk about this, let's just not talk about it.
Yeah.
What do we do to make us not talk about this?
I would say if there are any questions, concerns, or other options that folks would like to consider, please send that to us, send it to our way, so that we can explore it and be sure that we are prepared at the workshop, if that is the will of council. At that moment, be able to have answers to questions so that you all can make a recommendation.
We have been talking about this for months, so. And I agree with what Desiree's saying. People have questions, those questions need to be asked, not just voiced that they have questions.
Yeah, and I guess just to add to that, if we.
It would have been nice to have those questions at our committee meeting.
Yeah, and/or if we were going to go back to workshop on this, then it shouldn't have ended up on the agenda to begin with, I guess is my point, yeah.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Second.
Ashley, do you already second? Jan, just make sure. Jan, do you have any question on your side? I didn't know if I saw your hand.
No, not at this point.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, recommendation from the Public Services and Facilities Committee to award a five-year contract to Coastal Science and Engineering for semi-annual island-wide monitoring and surveying at an annual cost of $106,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Katie or Desiree, anything to, I know this is one of the recommendations that's coming out of the beach ad hoc meeting, is to do this semi-annual island-wide monitoring, so that is a little bit of a change, but.
Correct. The city issued a request for proposals for island-wide monitoring. It would be a five-year contract, and it would include two surveys and two reports every year, so that's double from what we have done historically, and that is an effort to have more updated information, more current information quicker, particularly around the two inlets where we're having some erosion issues. So that is a recommendation from the committee that, to approve that, to approve that contract.
And they were the only responders?
Correct. We issued an RFP, they were the only ones who responded, which is not unusual when you have a longstanding relationship with a community, so.
And that's not, that would not be the only reason to keep them.
That is right.
They've been doing a great job. Please don't let that sound that way, but just for the record, we're the only ones.
Yeah, between our staff and Stephen, somebody's on the beach just about every day.
I do think Stephen lives here.
Even though he really lives in Columbus. So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next few items we have discussed, but happy to continue that. Purchase of a mini excavator in amount of $53,634.23, state contract pricing. You can see where that's budgeted for.
Do we already have one of those? Do we have one? Is this another one? We are rented?
Renting.
We've been, we've been using one that is rented. We, the plan would be to purchase the one that we currently have, that we've been using for the couple of months.
We do have a skid steer already.
That's the second one.
I saw them cleaning out the ditch at 41st, and I was very excited, so.
Yes.
That's the one we're buying.
It looks great.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Aye.
Next item is purchase of a skid steer in amount of $62,500, state contract pricing. You can also see where that's budgeted for. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So this is a new unbudgeted purchase. We are recommending that it is paid from bond proceeds, because it is related to maintenance of the drainage project. I've included a memo detailing the recommendation, so we're full support with this purchase.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next replacement, Recreation Truck Department, Department Truck. In the amount of $41,316, state contract pricing. Again, you can see where that's budgeted. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Is short, about $1,300. Where did that come from?
I had, I had an answer to that question, and I can't find my notes.
It's not important that, I'll get the answer right now, I'm sure. I'm sure you know where it is.
Yes, yes. We have other line items that we anticipate being short that can make up the.
Probably in the Recreation Department budget.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Aye.
Next item, approval of award of a contract to Icon Contracting LLC for the construction of two ADA boardwalks at 46 and 52nd Avenue in the amount of $298,204. Again, you can see where that's budgeted. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
John?
I got a question. Just how do we determine where we're putting these boardwalks? It seems like we're putting them all towards the north end of the island.
So these two in particular are ADA compliant, and we have very limited beach access paths that could, where we would be allowed to have the ramp that would be necessary, because if, they need to be flat enough to be able to support that at a reasonable cost. So we, we have a list internally that we have surveyed, that we know could support an ADA-compliant boardwalk, and these are the two, the two that would lend itself for this type of boardwalk.
But also it should be parking, right?
And parking.
Correct. The other thing is we would include some ADA parking spaces along Palm Boulevard adjacent to, to the path. So this would be very similar to 34A. I think the challenge south of the island is just the dune. It's pretty high, and it would not allow us to have a boardwalk that has the slope necessary for it to be ADA compliant.
So this is the third one, correct?
We have, correct.
I mean, yeah, because we have 34A, now we're going to have these two.
We have, the front beach boardwalk is ADA compliant, 34A and 25th.
I'm sorry, 21st.
21st, 21st Avenue.
21st has stairs, though, going over the walk. I don't think that's ADA.
21st.
There's ADA parking, but there is no.
ADA parking, but you can't get to the beach on the 21st.
21st, can.
Yeah.
It's concrete all the way up to then you have a boardwalk, you have to go upstairs and downstairs.
No, that's not the county part.
Yes, sir.
We don't have to, go out there and look. All right, that's, that's the only question.
34A.
I just didn't know how we were selecting these, because it seems like we were concentrating them on that side of the island.
So the other, the other two that we have, or will have an RFP out for, is for boardwalks. These would not be ADA-compliant, because they would need stairs. And these were selected based on how flooded, how low they are, and how much time they have standing water after, after a rain. And those are located at 26A and 36A. So we have a list that we work off of, that we prioritize based on, based on ease of access. And this, these boardwalks are going to be paid for by a state budget allocation this year of $500,000. As you can see, the, the bid came back at $298, so $300,000. So that gives us $200,000 for an additional boardwalk this year as well.
Yeah, that was a pleasant spraz.
Do we have to, do we have to spend that, use it or lose it?
Yes, ma'am.
So we are in the works of using that?
Correct. We, the other two that, that we have planned for this year, 26A and 36A, we are, from the Charleston County Green Belt Board, we only have $280,000. So if, if the bids come back higher than that, from the state that we have left over, this $200,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to be ADA-compliant, the other one?
Correct.
All right.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next two items are new, just due to the emergency nature of them. H is discussion and consideration of change order from Coastal Science and Engineering for an additional, for additional and ongoing emergency coordination on Beach Inlet and Beachwood East.
Yes, in your packet, I've included an amendment request for the existing agreement with CSC for professional services related to the emergency beach management out of Palms, both at Beachwood, Beach Inlet and Beachwood. The last agreement that council approved last year had, provided services through April, anticipating, again, the Army Corps of Engineers project being started by that time and completed, or close to completion. So there's just been a lot more work that has happened over the summer, a lot more work that will need to happen through the end of the year. And CSC was able to extend their existing budget through June from April, but there is just a lot of work that would need to be, that would need to be done. The sandbag operation requires constant monitoring. The situation at Beachwood East, which we'll talk in a minute, has deteriorated. We'll need an, another response. So we're just making sure that we can cover the services of CSC, which we've enjoyed for the past couple of years, pretty much almost every day, and be able to, to support that.
And this is, what, $83,000?
Yes, sir.
And this includes, it's paying for July and August, so there's some retro here. And my understanding is it takes us through the end of the year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's right, Scott. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Can I just make a quick request?
Yes.
When we go into the next workshop, and I think Deborah had this schedule started. It was a pretty good schedule. It showed like where all of the money was going as far as the scraping and the contractor. I'm wondering if we shouldn't maybe just kind of have a standing schedule that's an update on, like where the beach money's going. We, for, and I'd like to see it from 23 and 24, since this started, I mean, it started last year. But show, you know, all of the contractor costs, the consulting costs that we have. We've now got sandbags, we've had restoration. I think it would be helpful, and you know, probably fit it on a page, but just sort of show chronologically what we've been doing, who the vendors are, what the service is, and how much we've spent so far. Because I think that's going to come into play when we start planning for our beach re-nourishment fund going forward as well.
We do have a schedule, a project worksheet is included. So, and it includes everything since we started early last year.
Okay, and it's got the contractors and all, everything in there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just keep that rolling.
And we have them by project. So we have a sandbag operation that we first did at Beachwood, Beach Inlet, then the scraping and the trucking, and then we have...
Does it show where the money's coming from?
It's all coming from the same fund, the Beach Preservation Fee Fund.
Does it, like, some of these projects where Wild Dunes is contributing? Like on the shore management, is that, does that show where the split is?
No, because we, we haven't started the shore management permit yet. So this includes work done to date.
And all of that's coming out of the beach re-nourishment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, all we've done is emergency, emergency protective measures, if you will, on both ends. The shore management permit will have its own project worksheet that shows any, the distribution of this cost share between Wild Dunes and the city. But that hasn't started yet.
All right, thanks.
Next item is discussion of emergency conditions at Beachwood East in consideration of approval of $200,000 expenditure for the placement of an additional 200 sandbags and 500 unfilled bags to keep on hand for future needs and ongoing maintenance.
So as I said earlier, the situation at Beachwood East is much critical than it was a few weeks ago. The last series of King Tides that we had last week deteriorated several sections of that. Seawall revetment, if you will. We are, just as a reminder, the city last year approved $300,000 for the installation of sandbags along that stretch. We installed 500 bags as part of that, as part of that project. Earlier this summer, we had $66,000 from that $300,000 allocation left. And we wanted to add sandbags in some areas that were low. So at that time, we added 100 sandbags. So the city has placed 600. So if you compare, council approved some monies last month to install down at Beach Inlet, 800 bags. So it's very similar section in length, maybe a little bit wider. But we are in need of additional funds. We've expended, there's $300,000 allocation approved by council last week, last year for, for sandbags. And knowing that we have to maintain this revetment until we're ready for shore management project, which we anticipate and hope to be able to do this winter, early next year, if permits are issued, there is a need for additional sandbags there. We are asking for a $200,000 allocation. Stephen, Douglas, and I have met every day this week and last week to discuss a plan to present to you all as an option. The $200,000 would allow us to purchase about 200 bags. As of this morning, we think we need 300. And allow a, an allowance for us to purchase unfilled bags. This is something that we had talked about, wanting to keep an inventory and number that allows us to maybe deploy them quicker, because that is, that is what drives the schedule, is how quickly the manufacturer can, can create and ship these bags for the contractor to then fill at the sand pit. So we're looking at about maybe 300 bags and reducing the amount of sandbags that we, that we buy unfilled. But we feel, we feel comfortable with a $200,000 allocation that allow, allow us to move pretty quickly in that area.
How much is an unfilled bag?
An unfilled bag, $150, and if it's filled, it's $450. And that includes the installation.
How are the, the bags holding up?
So they were holding up pretty well up at Beachwood. It wasn't until this last, you know, the storm moved them, moved some of them a little bit. We had some cresting over the bags during Debbie, which eroded some of the sand that was behind the sandbags. And the last couple of King Tides moved and buried a lot more.
The inside of the bag, the material that holds it together, the inside, is that plastic?
I don't know.
I think, I think it is.
It is plastic.
I think it, yes, I think the inner material is a woven polyester in a form of...
Were we concerned about those breaking up?
I think it's the best, so then the, there is an outer layer, kind of a felt material that holds the inside much better than the alternative bag. So I think it's the best bag we can get in terms of deterioration. But I have seen some trace of the, that black strand out there. So I can't say that it's perfect, but it is way better than any of the bags we've ever used before.
Yeah, I had a couple people mention it, Timmy.
And including in that permit, we have to pay a bond to the state that binds us to removal and, and ongoing maintenance. It is not the best and perfect solution. We definitely would prefer not to be in this, in this situation. But just as a reminder, we are limited in what we can do. We're authorized by the state. We are doing this to just get us through the end of the year when we can execute the shore management permit, the shore management project, which, you know, will be pretty substantial for that, for that area. But, you know, that section of Beachwood East is, it's having significant erosion. So this is another option other than scraping, and that beach is not wide enough to support scraping. So we're pretty much, you know, limited. That's the only other option, other than trucking in sand, which we all know it's incredibly expensive.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Other comments, conversations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Desiree and Douglas, thank you for the work on all this. I know it's been nonstop for about 14 months now. Next boards and commissions report. Boards of zoning appeals, no meeting in August. Planning commission, no meeting in August. Accommodations tax advisory committee, no meeting in August. And environmental advisory committee, no meeting in August.
Just to clarify, a taxes meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
So they'll have a meeting in August.
Ordinances, resolutions, and petitions, second reading, nothing. First reading, nothing. Resolutions and proclamations, first...
Mr. Chu, I'd like to suspend rules order and take all three of the resolutions at one time, since they're very similar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Whoever makes the motion on all three of these, if you can make the motion to...
I'll make the motion to approve. Make the motion to approve, the reading, and also to approve resolutions to 2024, 5, 2024, 6, 2024, 7, all at once.
I'll second that again.
Desiree, anything? I mean, this is routine business for us every year for these three.